Good evening. We have a forum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Tom Keller.
Great. Just here on behalf of Northeast Solar and our customer over at 26 Lawrence Plain Road. We've put together nine copies for the building application, building permit application.
Who's 26 Lawrence Plain Road?
Customer name is Jonathan King.
Okay.
Yep. So I can dish out these nine copies to you gentlemen now.
Are you applying for the special permit or is this a ground mount customer?
Ground mount. Yep. Small residential ground mount. Is this what you're looking for?
I don't know. I have to look at it.
Okay.
Did we see it?
Yes. There are two things missing.
26 Lawrence Plain Road.
Waiting on a PE stamped memo from the manufacturer. But wanted to work a little sooner or later on behalf of the customer, get this out to you, to everybody.
In person, though. Yes.
Thumbnail sketches, 20 panels, observing setbacks, not in the plaza plane.
So the panels are going to be along the... along clear?
It's going to be parallel with the southern property line.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. I see a second page. Okay. So are you applying tonight or what are you trying to do tonight? Or this is just trying to get, ask questions and then come back to us in the next meeting?
Well, I'd like to apply, but like I said, not in that packet is one of the items, a PE stamped letter from the manufacturer. Just didn't get that yet. So just with timing in mind and respecting the process, I wanted to get this in front.
A buzzer on mailing labels?
Yeah.
No, we have a buzzer. We don't have one mailing label.
Stickers.
Just an administrative review.
Oh, that's right. That's right. This is not a special, this is right. This is, that's right. You're right. This is not a special hearing. Administrative review. That's right.
It's the east side of 47.
What we do want to do is, in order to allow time for everyone's comments because it's...
Yep.
So probably put it for first meeting in November.
Yep. Where's the location? Right next to one farmhouse.
Sebaskis, right next, north of Tony Sebaskis.
Other side of the street.
No, right here, Sebaskis and there.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
So east side of 47.
East side of 47. Okay.
It's not on the south side.
Right, east side. That's Tony Sebaskis.
Closest property line is the southern property line.
That's Tony Sebaskis, north of Tony Sebaskis, the logger.
Right, next household.
Yeah.
How close is it to Detective Jacaskin's house?
Thousand feet. They're darned in the water.
She's beyond the 300 feet?
Yes. We can set, that's election day. It's not a public hearing. It's just administrative review. Okay. We can set, you can, we can set your review date up for one month until they have over six.
Okay, sure. Yeah, definitely want to respect the process, but obviously the customer wants it.
Yeah, it's not a special permit.
Right.
Okay.
But we do have a notice requirement to get it out.
Definitely. Yeah, that's what I'm using today.
October 6th. I mean, November 6th.
So what should I tell the customer and what should I gear it for next?
Well, we need what you, the paper that you missed.
Yep.
And basically this package. And what will, if you could, on...
We have to distribute these to the area.
I'll distribute that, yeah, but bring, bring more. Yeah, if you could take this picture right here. And superimpose what the solar panels would look like for the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Like a 3D something or?
That would be great, yeah.
Are they going to be visible from Route 47?
Yeah.
Or they can be? Well, they're about 175 feet off 47.
Yeah.
Behind the house, so.
Are they going to be visible?
Another, on, it's, okay, on this, this sheet right here?
Yeah.
What John has asked, and will these be visible from 47?
I mean, the short, the short answer is no. I mean, it's behind the house. He's got stuff like a boat and a garden here, but maybe from over here, catching the right line, you'd see it.
Yeah.
Theoretically even from right here.
Okay, so maybe what, what we might want is some kind of a screening that would just hide these a little bit. So that John, John's big on making sure you can't, that they can't be seen from the road.
Okay.
Okay, so just some kind of arbor by the...
Yeah, like it, this looks like going north. You're not going to be able to even see it because Tony is...
No, it's, I mean, it's only about 11 feet tall.
Going south.
Yeah. Even going, well, that's, depending what's over here.
I mean, they have a fence right on this property line that's about 10 feet tall.
Okay.
So.
They have fence? That's no 10 feet tall.
No?
No.
Anchoring mechanism, auger again or cement?
Earth anchor.
So just, just post driven into the ground?
Not even posts.
Like screws?
No, it's about a seven foot cable with a little bullet shaped thing that we drive down and then we add some tension to it and it sets as the anchor. Yeah. It's a dream to install and...
I've never, I'd be, I'd be, out of curiosity, I'd be interested in seeing the details on that, okay?
Sure, yeah, I think the PE stamped memo would be helpful for that.
Because that sounds pretty nifty.
It is, yeah, and frankly, it's a dream for applications like this.
Okay.
Yeah, but no, no concrete for any scope.
And no posts?
No posts. No, it's, it ends up being a, this is a steel platform.
How, how long is the cable going down in the ground?
Six and a half feet. Yep. And depending on the localized wind and snow, usually it ends up being one anchor on the front pads and then two anchors on the rear platforms.
How many panels on this?
20.
20?
How many KW is that going to put out?
In this setting, it's, it's a lot. It's going to be between 8,000 and 9,000 kiloatt hours a year.
So, I mean, but, but the rate, so that, those 20 panels are rated like eight to, eight to nine KW?
Yeah, so 20 360 watt panels is 7.2 KW, but it's heavily in such an awesome location.
I'm just saying, I've got 32 panels that puts out 7.3. They've, they've, they've become that much more efficient.
Yeah, so I don't, do you know the wattage on your panels?
Mine, mine, I've got 32 panels and are rated at 7.3 KW.
Okay, so this is 20 panels at 7.2.
Almost 30%, 35%.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the name of the game.
Okay, that's right. Okay, so we'll see you on November 6th.
November 6th, couple more updated things and some screening that you want.
Yeah.
Is that somewhere, did we miss that somewhere in the documentation or?
Well, it says sufficient screening and we've kind of, it's kind of interpreted to interpretation, but if you can't, if it can't be seen from 47, that's the biggest thing is, you know, that's why I'm saying, to take a superimpose it somehow on your, on your drawings, if you think you can't see it from 47s, then you may be okay because of the buildings and whatever trees that are there.
Wouldn't the neighbors perhaps want to, just be able to see it from their property and all stuff like that?
That'll be, that'll be all right.
Yeah, exactly. So that's just not the only issue.
Okay.
The neighbors may have some input here too.
Sure, I mean, the fence to the south, that's doing the trick. And then to the north. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm glad to get more info together and I'll tell the customer things are in motion.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Phil, I won't be participating in this. It possibly is. It may be far enough, or far enough that it isn't, but just to be safe, I don't think you need more.
All right, so David Phil, buddy, I met the word. What you see is a, I guess, a plot picture, site plan for my property. And as part of the very small subdivision approval, there was a non-buildable area in the front and the rear of the property that was reserved for agricultural or ecological purposes only. And so what I'm seeking here is permission to place a 40 by 60 barn, partially in the buildable area, partially in the non-buildable area, as well as the 10 by 14 approximately chicken coop.
What are you going to use it for?
Chickens in the chicken coop and farm equipment storage and barn.
Chickens are certainly agricultural.
I don't have a problem with that.
So make a motion to amend the very small subdivision to, actually, I'm sure we need, we need to amend it, but make a motion to find that the erection of the barn and a chicken coop in the otherwise non-buildable area is consistent with the terms of approval.
Second.
Will you apply to vote this, Dave? The chicken coop immediately, the barn is free.
So motion second. Any other comments, questions?
How many chickens do you plant to hold them now?
600, no, I'm not sure at this point.
Are these free range chickens and what kind of breed are they?
No.
You're not into that or what?
Not free range.
Oh, okay.
Wouldn't want a coop up for free range.
I was just checking in case the neighbors had a question they could answer.
I'm sure they will.
Never know.
Are you here? Anything? All in favor?
All right. 401, staying.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Shumway.
I guess I'm on my own. We had the presentation for 22 Breckenridge for the additional building lot. Something that might have been a miscommunication between myself and the surveyor or something it oversaw was that I understand the non-buildable means no dwellings. I was hoping to be able to put a barn actually on the property.
Do I know what we need for?
We have horses.
Oh, agricultural units.
Yes. Hay storage.
Yeah, so this is... Yeah, this is it.
Yeah, we're looking for the house somewhere in this location here and I was looking to put a barn somewhere here. And I would note that the barn would not even be visible to any other homes or...
What is the purpose of the barn?
Horses, agricultural hay storage.
Horse barn? Horse barn?
Yes, sir.
Were they going to graze over here?
Yes.
If it's agricultural, I wouldn't see a problem with that. About how big of a barn, any idea?
Probably 36, 36, something like that.
All we want is not, no additional houses, so.
And I guess while it's in a question, it's not something I'm even considering, but I was asked to ask, is swimable? Is that an issue on any part if there was something there at some point?
Well, if you put a swimming pool in, the only thing, what is this property part?
Which lot would be tied to? This, this one here.
Okay. Yeah, so the pool theoretically should stay on this building lot.
Okay.
Okay, unless you make the lot, unless you want to move this lot line a little bit to put the pool, in other words, make this lot bigger and, do you understand what I'm saying? But the pool, the pool, the pool should be on this lot and not, not encroaching on that lot.
So a barn can be over here, but a pool should be in...
Because the, the pool is considered residential and it's four year res, the residence, whatever residence will be here.
It's just a crazy whole country.
Is there a maximum size of a barn?
If it's agricultural, he could put in good size, but longer than compliance with setbacks and everything.
Sure.
Okay. I know somebody in Deerfield who's got a horse barn that he bought the property and his horse barn is like, I want to say it's 75 by 100 and 125. It's a monster.
Would they probably board horses?
It's actually a riding state, a riding arena. It's not, it's because size on the roof, but it's not insulated already.
Sounds fine, just out of my budget.
You know, and I was like, boy, you could shake that heck up at a workshop.
But anyways, okay, I'll make the same motion that erecting a horse barn on the non-build area is consistent with terms of approval.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Any votes? Motion passes, fine, go.
Take your time.
That's it. Thank you. Mr. Nixon?
I'm here for the hearing, so I didn't...
Oh, you're just, you're just...
Just here.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I can make a clarifying note. Which hearing are you?
Marijuana.
That's not for hearing tonight. That's up for discussion with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Right.
You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to all of your, to participate in the discussion, but that the public hearing on the zoning article is scheduled for two weeks from tonight.
Susan.
Brought the revised, which didn't have a lot of changes since last time.
Right.
Some organizational things, right?
Yep, renumbering, that didn't, that didn't change anything.
Copies?
You have copies, anyway?
I have a copy of, from you, the last one that you sent. That's the one that she picked it up. Okay.
Do you have one, Joe?
I need one.
Anybody in the audience, we've got two hectares if you want to take a look at what we're talking about. This is the same thing I'm going to email you. You just, you can share them and kind of go along with us. Might have something, might see something catches your eye, either you like or hate.
So some formatting things. I realized that you had made some formatting changes to the chart.
Yeah, I just moved stuff rather, renamed them to be consistent with what we have today. I didn't change any wording, I don't think. I just moved them.
Commercial or industrial.
Right, yeah.
What's going on with the treatment center? Where does that fit in?
What's a treatment center?
For medical...
This is not medical.
Oh, that, that, that hasn't changed.
What's that? Is that for addiction or what is that?
The one we previously approved?
See here. A medical marijuana treatment center.
On this?
Oh, right here. Yeah, the, the, right next to the very last line.
Oh, any type of...
Medical marijuana light facility, except if marijuana treatment center. We don't... A medical marijuana treatment center would be a, an addiction center. I'm assuming you're like a...
That's what I thought, so you're right.
Is that what that's intended to be?
Not necessarily. It could be a center where you get treated with medical marijuana.
Well, what is it?
So let's look at the definitions. Medical marijuana treatment centers on page four at the bottom, also known as registered marijuana dispensary.
Okay.
Profit entity registered.
That is a, that is the one facility we've approved for the Sunoco station. That's what that means.
I didn't know that you had done that one yet.
Yeah, we have a medical marijuana facility approved at the old Sunoco station across Mustafa Shop.
Next to Fiddler's.
Okay.
Next to the mosque. So there's problems in it.
Well, it's not next to the mosque.
Okay, so the medical marijuana treatment center is outside the terms of the adult use marijuana by law, which is why it's there as an accept in that case?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. So the medical marijuana treatment center actually is allowed elsewhere in the business district?
That's right, yes.
But if they want to dovetail the recreational marijuana, adult marijuana onto that Sunoco station, could they?
Yes, under state law, they can't.
Yes, that's what I thought and...
And they'd be a marijuana retailer at that point, which is a lot.
Correct.
Or by special permit, so that's fine. Yep.
Right.
Now, Susan, the special permit, in Conway, they approved a special permit that lapses after five years.
Okay.
Is that, I've never heard of something like that.
We had a special permit that had to be renewed every year, so it's not unlike that. That's a question.
Well, that, that could be because the controversy is going to become with the people in the audience with the the farmer growing the medical marijuana.
No, no, the farmer growing marijuana.
The marijuana.
That's a question that I was thinking about that, let's go on with this.
Okay.
Before we get into the, let's go over what we have here and we can get into that one.
Okay.
I don't want to muddy the water anymore. Get over that. Okay.
So we changed the numbers, right? Everything's 30.
Yeah.
So it matches. The definitions have not changed at all.
We added 30.4, 0.2, 0.6, and 0.7 about lighting.
Right.
Okay, because that was a question that, that's a concern that was raised by people at, at a meeting that was conducted. And basically it says that security lighting shall comply with lighting of the zoning by law. However, any illumination utilized for drawing purposes shall be shielded so as not to be visible to neighboring properties and to the sky above. So basically at night, it's going to be black. Okay.
Why would you block from the sky above?
Because you, dark sky, because it's going to, just because you can't see it from the neighbors, if it lights up the sky, the neighbors are going to be, you know, say they're stargazers, you know, or something like that. Even with the lighting, if the facility is within a couple hundred feet of a residence, that lighting, use the greenhouses that are over off of the old Cummins Farm, where it used to be the Montgomery Rose.
Montgomery Roses there.
And when they, when they put those on at night, you can see the light in the sky from my house. And I'm seven miles away.
Wow.
Hidden by a mountain. Okay.
You know why?
Yeah, yeah.
One I won't do, you know?
Right.
When it used to be over on Route 9, you could really see the greenhouses lighting up the sky at night, so.
So what did they do for that? Or cart over the place?
Or roam inside. That's, that's how, that's what they're going to have to figure out what to do. This is the regulation. We're not designers. They figure out how to do it. Okay.
So that's 30.4, 0.2, 0.6.
And 0.7.
Seven.
And 0.7, okay, okay. Okay. Everything else, I think, you know, distances and everything else, we've got pretty good. Security, we're incorporating the...
State guidelines?
The state 500.110 by reference. And 30.4, 30.4, 0.2, 0.6, right? Wait a minute, we got some, I got the wrong, I got some numbering concerned. 30.4, 0.2, 0.6. Security lighting shall comply with section 8.8. Yeah, 30.4, 0.2, 0.6 should be 30.4, 0.2, 0.8.
Oh, yes, I see that.
Okay.
That's the one foot candle?
No, 30.4, 0.2, 0.6 is the one foot candle.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm saying...
But for the people in the audience, just...
On page, on top of page seven, I got it, I didn't, I didn't number that one properly. 30.4, 0.2, 0.6 on the top of page seven should be 30.4, 0.2, 0.8. Okay.
And what happened here at the bottom of page six, there's that sentence about signage. That should probably be up under 30.4, 0.2, 0.5.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Which one is that, Jimmy?
Right on up.
There's a sentence...
But that's, that's, that sentence right here should be under, this one. Under, yeah, should be included in that line.
With the rest of the signage.
Yeah. So how they did, shut, shut down. Just not changing any wording, I'm just putting it in a current location.
Right.
You're referring to the state by law. Is there any paragraph that if there's any potential conflict between ours local zoning and the state, that the, the state law will prevail? Or is that understood?
Dave, I think it said it at the very beginning. Said it to the zoning, on page two, at the top. By law and Massachusetts will be included.
Subject provisions of 48, yeah, 94G.
This is just general. Applicability, 30.3.
Certainly they're going to revise it.
Nothing in this section shall supersede federal estate laws, which means federal estate law control.
Okay. Okay, yeah, the very first sentence. Okay. Good point, Joe. And that pretty much takes care of this. I think it's pretty...
On the last page at 30.5.13 is the reference to the security requirements and state requirements.
Okay, right.
And our cooperation to commission.
And that, and the security requirement, just for anybody in the audience, 30.5.13 references Massachusetts general laws 500.110 as the security requirements, and they're pretty stringent. It's not a matter of, you might do this, it's a matter of, this is the way you're going to do it.
Which one are you at?
30.5... Thirty, point five, point one, two, next page.
And one, three.
Five, page ten, okay. Wait. There, yeah, that one. Thirty, point five, point two, yeah.
So you're referencing that state?
Yes, thirty, point five, point ten, this one right here.
I know that, but the explanation is there, not here, right?
The references here, the requirements are in the state.
So how would someone?
They're gonna look them up.
They're gonna look them up.
They're gonna look them up.
I just realized, I think the number is wrong here too. It's thirty, point five, point, it should be point one, three, point one, point one, three, point.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, there's another catch, you're right.
That's thirty-five, point what?
Thirty, point five, point one, three.
No, this.
And then the items that are listed on there.
These, these eleven should all be thirteens. David.
Yeah.
It's all, if I make these corrections, and the ones that are available for the town meeting handout, we can just reference in the, in the article, this, correct?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm following through the corrections right here, so I can just go back to town hall and plug them in. What do you need them for? Uh, I need them for tomorrow night when the slide board signs.
Oh, that's easy, okay, okay, well, why don't we, don't make changes, Jimmy will send you.
Get them to you.
Okay.
Okay, that way.
One way everybody.
That way make sure if it's, you know, we're not doing this at all.
There may be some discussion here too.
Of course, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
So with the neighbors.
Okay, okay. All right.
If someone wants to grow a field of tobacco and have their firewood, they can grow whatever they want.
Correct.
As long as it's agricultural. May we restrict where marijuana can be grown because it's an agricultural.
It's not considered agricultural.
It's not agricultural, it's not agricultural, under state law.
Okay, okay, under state.
Yeah. Chapter three fifty-one. Okay, specifically includes marijuana.
Mike was making a point, originally when the people that were proponents of growing it as an agricultural use came in, and they gave the impression to us that it was gonna be grown in a field surrounded by corn, and then when they had the meeting with the neighbors, they said it's gonna be grown in greenhouses.
Oh, this is a proposal that you received?
No, 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 that's the.
This is just general talk.
They're trying to jump the gun, and they're anticipating, they wanna be there first with the most, you know, uh, so they had a meeting with the neighbors and that's when they were saying, oh no, we don't wanna grow it like corn out in the field or tobacco, it's gonna be in greenhouses.
No, the state cops lay around with chapters to prevent that.
No, but, but there is a difference because all of a sudden now you have a building and now all of a sudden you have lighting and, uh, and depending on the size of it, it can be rather imposing, and it's gonna be there all year round, so that was the.
Yeah, but the building, they can grow year round, the field they can't.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Now, I mean, I, I think that pretty much takes care of the by law as we have it. The question, now getting back to what was raised by a few people, and I was thinking about it myself, is the general idea of a business growing it inside of a building, to me, is pretty tame, if you will, other than the appearance of the building. But the building itself is going to be enclosed, is gonna be secure, and it's more or less obvious. However, greenhouses or open row are a whole different idea, and, um, I mean, granted, the actual, let me rephrase that, the open row, the stink of marijuana is short, I'm gonna guess a week or two. However, if it's a greenhouse, the stink, excuse me, is pretty much going to be fairly consistent in that the idea of a greenhouse is to grow it year round. So there's going to be multiple times during the course of the year where there's going to be an odor from it. And the by law says no odor shall emanate beyond the boundary to the such and such and such and such. And a question I've got for the board, for us to think about, is what if it does? Right now, we're giving a special permit and they haven't. And the idea of rescinding that is not even in here or renewing it. And what I'm wondering is if there should be something like we had in some of the other special permits where they need to renew it every year for the first couple of years, and if they're good people with no complaints, then it's gonna be, let's say, a third renewal. Keep on going.
But this seems to me that, that if somebody's gonna make all this kind of investment in it, and it's a big investment.
Yeah.
To do it with security, and this board can turn around a year later and say, you're all done?
No, only if they aren't while doing what they're supposed to be doing, in other words, somebody comes in, I'll use a greenhouse, and that's probably the more obvious one, they come into the greenhouse and they comply with the by law. We have no reason not to reapprove it. They come in and they put a greenhouse in and, oh, well, we're not always covering, it's not always being covered at night and the neighbors can see it, no.
Well, you do have a requirement in here for annual reporting.
Well, here's, annual reporting, okay.
Says, um, provide a copy of the current state license for the facility and its owners and demonstrate continued compliance with the conditions of the special permit.
Look, the critical thing, Jim, at that hearing was the commissioner, former commissioner of agriculture was there, and the neighbors were concerned about the smell, the odor emanating from the greenhouses. And, uh, so he was saying, oh, all we can do is be good neighbors and sing together and sing kumbaya, it will work out, you can work it out. And I asked if there was a particular measuring thing, for example, we have the one foot candle of white spillage onto your neighbor's property that can be, so we can measure it, and we can measure sound. But he said there is no measure, and they've had a lot of agricultural complaints about manure and.
Sure.
So there is no measuring device for odor.
What's that smell like?
And scotch.
It smells like scotch.
And, uh, so that, and so the, the comment I was making before is that we may have to have a smell test after a year or two years or something like that, uh, because once again, I'd like to reiterate what I say many, many times, zoning is that right between the rights of the individual landowner and the rights of the neighbor or the community next door. And it's a delicate balance, and it kind of depends what side you're on, how the scales are thick. But that's our job, is to try to make a reasonable balance.
What's, what section were you in, Susan, for that?
I was on page eight, uh, thirty, point four, point four, point three.
Now, what if they don't demonstrate, the question I, and I raised it early on in our special, when we were talking about some of this, they're filing a report, the neighbors are complaining, they're not complying with the by law or with the special permit. What recourse do we have, because we can't rescind a special permit unless it specifically says in this by law that there is a time clause on it. The zoning enforcement office can go in and say, you're not in compliance, I'm gonna find you. The police department, if it's, if they're not in order with the law, that's another story. But in the zoning thing, we are extremely limited in what we can and cannot do, and we can't rescind a special permit.
But after a year or so, we can review it.
Only if we say that.
That's where, that's where.
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
We'll add another sentence here to clarify that.
Okay.
Because Conway does, I just.
What, what I'm saying is, what we, this is from experience.
Yep.
We used to have, we had special permits for home occupation, home business, and it was something else. And.
Apartments.
Apartments. Each of those had a one-year renewal for, I think it was, they, these permits shall be renewed every year on the anniversary of the granting for, I think it was three or four years. And if they were good law-abiding, by law-abiding businesses, after the third or fourth renewal, you were all set. And because there was that cloud hanging over the head, we never had a complaint. Every one of them did what they were supposed to, and even the neighbors said, this is working wonderful. And it worked out so well, and because the people weren't redoing them as they were supposed to, we took those clauses out of those three special permits, okay? And people basically work, and it worked well. This is something brand new, and I think we should have some kind of renewal for this every year. If you're complying with the by law, it's, you know, and basically during the course of the year, I guarantee you, these people in the audience are some of them, but there will be others, if they're not compliant, we're gonna hear about it. And so will the zoning enforcement office, I mean, I don't know, they're gonna be complaining to a lot of people if they're not in compliance. And then they come in for the renewal, you're not doing what you're supposed to, we're not gonna give you a permit. To John's point, there is a huge amount of money going to be invested. So it's to their, um, benefit, for lack of a better word, to be in compliance all the time so that they don't have complaints and do what you're supposed to. Because this is a big cloud hanging, this, this is not like, oh, you know, somebody with an accessory apartment, they may have, you know, twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars tied up, these people are gonna have well into the six figures tied up into these businesses.
So do we know if the state permitting requires compliance with local zoning? I'm thinking that if.
Yes.
They get a cease and desist order or a violation notice from the building inspector with a copy to the state cannabis control board, and they are at risk of having their permit pulled.
That, that's the other thing that I was thinking about too, could we.
Could they override us?
That, that's fine.
No, I'm thinking that's, that's gonna be the twenty thousand pound elephant sitting on there. Whatever the, whatever fear or, or lack of fear they have of local enforcement, having the state pull their license
is a whole nother thing.
Should really get their attention.
Right.
It's like having the state banking commission pull your charter, you know, it's like the, it's, it's similar to the ABC. The, the town can play with your liquor license, but the state can say, you lost it, and you're done.
You know, I, I really think this thing, because this is new to the community, that to have this come in, to protect the health and safety of the citizens that are out there, this should be renewed. If there's any complaints, then it could be addressed right there.
That's true, I mean, I, I'm leaning towards having it an annual review for a couple of years. And the same thing, if it turns out that things are going wonderful and businesses are in compliance, we can always take it out down the road like we did with the other permit, but they have it in here from the get-go, makes whoever the applicant is, you're gonna comply. Because if you don't, if we could put, instead of putting, put it on review date, I would say we actually give them a timeframe, something like, you know, between, uh, December one and January thirty, if this permit must be renewed every year, which gives them time for the growing season.
Who's, who's going to inspect the growing facility before it's operational, to make sure everything is in place, nobody?
No.
The state?
Well, the, the state will for their, for their stuff, but for a zoning by law, the building inspector will inspect it and.
Lighting, for instance, lighting?
That, that's part of the building permit.
He's gonna make sure.
Who inspects the smell? Lieutenant Pepe left yours?
Well, that, that's going to be.
One person said it stinks, and the other person said it doesn't, state.
There is a clause.
We have an answer from the audience?
There is a.
What? Audience questions, if you want.
Yes.
There's, there's section thirty, point four, point two, point four ventilation. It says if you go to thirty, point four, point two, point four, point two, no odor from marijuana or its processing can be detected by a person with an unprepared or otherwise normal sense of smell.
Correct.
The primary word in three, point four, point two, point four ventilation, it says all indoor marijuana establishments. Is there any reason why the word indoor must be there?
So what was that number again?
Page six, thirty.
Page six.
Four, point two, point four ventilation, and then it says all indoor marijuana establishments shall be ventilated in such a manner that, and then you, you go on to two, point four, point two, no odor. But that's specifically addressing just indoor facilities. I assume of whose polyethylene greenhouse is really defined as outdoor. And this section would not, would the word indoor in it right there?
Yeah, well, this was originally designed, thinking that marijuana would be grown inside of a closed building.
Exactly.
And the, the fact of the matter is that it's probably going to be done in both outdoor and greenhouses.
But to the point, uh, we just take out the all marijuana establishments shall be ventilated in such a manner.
However, I don't think you're gonna be able to control the smell from the outdoor.
Well, that's gonna be, you hit the nail right on the head.
Okay, but then, that, that answers the question then. If, if, if the grower can't control the smell, maybe they can't grow, but.
Well, maybe you shouldn't.
This, this, this is not.
This, this question goes a little bit beyond marijuana with the neighbors here. It had to do with a greenhouse, and then the greenhouse was given a ZBA approval for variants, and but then there was another greenhouse that went up and chickens were put in, and so there is some connection here, and if the neighbors, for example, are being overly zealous with their smell, who's gonna be the adjudicating force? Is it gonna be the planning board?
Well, it doesn't seem like it's that big an issue, it's not a question of whether no unpleasant odor shall emanate, it says no odor.
I know.
So if you can smell it, whether you like it or, whether you love it or hate it, it's a violation. That seems, that, that seems to be, that answers the test, what, is there a test? Well, it's not like a breathalyzer or something, it's a yes or no.
That to me is unfair, because anybody, if they're mad at their neighbors, they just think.
That's exactly correct.
And then, holy Christ.
Yes, so you had a problem?
If, if I can, I'm, I'm very subject of, of odor. I appreciate, we do, we all appreciate, lucky boards, as we do. Uh, our concerns are being pretty much voiced, or some of them are being voiced by the members now. Uh, we realize that the question of indoor odors versus outdoor odors, and we believe that since this is an agricultural purpose, it is not allowed now that the neighborhood needs to be protected from adverse smells. The only trouble, one of the problems we have is that it would be disingenuous to tell growers that they can grow this crop and invest money in, in growing it and, and start down this path, uh, only to realize that the by law is written that there could be no odors escaping the crop. Odors are gonna escape the crop. In Colorado, neighbors complained for within a quarter mile around of odors from marijuana grows. Uh, so it's, it becomes really difficult unless we say, you know, that, that it must be grown in the greenhouse, and it must have charcoal scrubbers, which are what's used in many communities in Colorado and Oregon. Unless we insist that those are the things that are in place, it really isn't fair to the neighbors or the potential grower. There's going to be marijuana, there's a variety of marijuana called scum, because.
That's how it stinks.
So there are going to be unpleasant odors in the neighborhood, that's pretty much a given, so, uh, that, the, the lighting is probably controllable, uh, but there's, there's so many issues that people, no one in Massachusetts has any experience with yet. And it seems like we're, you know, we're, we're looking to be, we're, we're almost looking to be ahead of the curve and the cutting edge on this, and there's just so many unanswered questions that really are, and the odor just being one of them. No one, no one is suggesting. No one is suggesting, no, we haven't talked about crime. We've talked about security, but not crime yet. And so there's all sorts of concerns, and I think, you know, whether this is the appropriate time now, or we need to wait for the, for the public hearing to discuss it more, I don't know.
Well, I think we need to discuss this kind of stuff now so we can put this, the bylaw forward for the selectmen to look at tomorrow. Now, as far as odors go, I don't really see it as a problem. If we simply say there should be no odor at the boundary, and a farmer says, "Well, I can't open grow, 'cause that's impossible," you're right, then you can't open grow. Okay? If you're gonna, I mean, I'll give you an example. If you're growing the marijuana, heavy like is not a good, not a good, because there's too many hells out there, middle of, on North Maple Street, South Maple Street, there's some places where the nearest house is, the nearest house is probably well over a thousand, if not two thousand feet away. And if somebody was to put up a quarter acre there, you may be so far away from a house that you wouldn't have an odor. There's a few places in town like that. Granted, very few. Maybe a few places off and back of the River Drive on the Tooten Farm or along the Connecticut River, the houses are far away. But for the most part, you're absolutely right. There's very few places in town where you can't find a house more than five to eight hundred feet away.
Right, and then this particular project that's been proposed, you know, is immediately adjacent.
And that's fine.
Well, that's...
And the point there is, if you're gonna do that, there will be no odors coming out of your greenhouse. And if that costs you a fortune and you can't do it, then you can't do it, because that's the fact of the matter.
Jim, there was a question, too, at that meeting, a butters. And what is the, how many feet is that?
Depends how far the wind drive...
Well, no, I think we should be a little bit more specific.
So it's a special permit, so it's chapter 40A, and it's a butters, three butters to a butters within 300 feet of the property line.
300 feet, okay, so that's...
Yeah, 300 feet away, from 300 feet of the property line.
I think we should name...
Many farmers, and the example that was given was, that farmer has enough land to put it a thousand yards away, but it seemed to be, how close was it to Shattuck Road?
It was gonna be within a couple hundred feet, didn't it?
Yeah.
But that was all about what they were proposing originally. They were reserving, they said they intended to reserve the right to build right up to the road, 50 feet.
Just remember, the exterior or the property, okay? Or adjoining property. Okay, so if he's got a lot of land and decides to put it 200 feet or 100 feet away from this still in his property, and he can smell it, that's a violation. But if he puts it, you know, 2,000 feet away...
But what if he says he still can smell it?
Well, then, then certainly...
All I'm saying is, if it's in a greenhouse, he can control the odor by filtering.
I think we, I think we should add this as the stinking bylaw.
Wouldn't that be perfect?
The fact of the matter is, the state has approved this, has approved marijuana, and if we don't do something, they'll be growing it everywhere and anywhere.
So is it possible to look at this to add, to extend their moratorium, get a chance to do some more in-depth research concerning smells, lighting, crime, and all of that, and come up with a bylaw that might limit size and scope? So it might even be possible for the gentleman to grow on the parcel across the street?
It's already limited in size. The state limits it in size.
Then they limit your license?
No, they limit the size.
What is the size limitation?
100,000 square feet.
Well, right.
Two and a half acres.
But I'm saying, but that's a 100,000 square feet, that's a...
Two and a half acres.
That's a $10 million grower.
That's a two and a half acres.
Right, right.
But if it's inside, and they're gonna use scrubbers and stuff, then you can't smell it. But the question here is, if we allow the farmers to use outside...
Growing.
Growing, then there's a problem here.
That is true. Now, just for everybody's information...
It's true that there are areas in Hattler that can grow this stuff, and you're not gonna smell it, smell it.
Who said so?
I know.
How do you know that?
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
How do you know that?
Just for your information, there's two articles on the town meeting warrant. One is to approve this zoning bylaw, and to accept and approve it as a zoning bylaw. The other one is to extend the moratorium to June 1, 2019, because we aren't sure if this is going to be what we want. So we're taking the two-step approach. We're going to either, one's gonna be voted in and one's gonna be tabled. We don't know which one's gonna be done right now. And we're trying to get all the information we can, because this appears on the surface to be okay. Maybe it's not. Maybe it needs a little bit of tuning, maybe it needs a lot of tuning. Okay? And to think we're going to do a whole bunch of research between now and next May and get a lot of the information is probably wishful thinking. That's not gonna happen. We can only get some information, because we won't have the available facts from the state in a lot of this stuff. You know, lighting, I think we got pretty much, lighting is pretty well addressed. I think the biggest concern is odors. And, you know, maybe we don't allow open grow. Maybe we just stay within closed growing.
It seems to me to get a more accurate call on this, there's no other way to do it but to go out to state where they do this now, and see what the repercussions are.
Well, but for the fact that the state is so far behind on permitting, this bylaw is a variant of the one that East Hampton has already adopted. And I think some other communities in PVPC area...
But they haven't grown it there yet.
Yeah, they haven't grown it there yet.
But East Hampton's only doing it inside.
Yes. But that's where we're actually going to get the answers, to me, is from other towns that are ahead of us in the process.
And there's at least three states where, Colorado, Oregon, and California, there's a ton of information out there. Quick Google search will bring up factual, not anecdotal information, but very factual information, because they've commissioned studies and all of that. So it is out there, and many of the people here in the office...
Well, smell is not out there for measuring smells.
There is, yep, it is.
To measure smell?
They have, they have, they have a way that they do measure smells.
Mr. Costa?
Yes. In the previous discussion, the planning board, I believe, has identified a hoop house as not a building. So if people grow...
Liberty Mutual accident forgiveness means they...
In a hoop house, is that considered indoor?
That was the zoning board of appeals, not the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. To us, a hoop house would be indoor growing. It's a greenhouse. It's an enclosed facility.
And that's, that had an agricultural overtone to it. This is, according to state definition, industrial.
Randy?
I think there's gotta be some definitive way to deal with the smell issue. I don't, I realize it is an issue, but unless you can scientifically quantify it somehow, all you're gonna have is somebody, to Johnny's point, I think it smells, but he doesn't notice it, and back and forth we go.
I absolutely agree with that.
Commissioner...
What we, you know, if this gentleman is corrected, they actually have developed a way to measure odor. That would be extremely interesting to find out how that's done.
A former commissioner of agriculture was at that meeting, and he said, "That's a common complaint of a neighbor's menorah smell, chicken menorah, any kind of menorah, and, you know, pigs." He said, "There was, there is nothing in Massachusetts that can measure smell." He said, "Try to be good neighbors to each other," and that's it. That's, that was his answer.
Well, that's not an exception, but it's gonna be...
I think he's a member of the corporation that's wrong.
Yeah, but if I go back to the terms of the bylaw, it says "any odor." So it doesn't matter whether you think it's a bad odor. If you can smell it at all, you're in violation.
So why not turn around and limit this to strictly inside growing? Until the thing is processed, then we don't get in any kind of trouble, or the neighbors don't?
I think we're, I am personally leaning to that idea, too, because it seemed like the outdoor grow is going to be an insurmountable problem to address. Whereas if it's strictly limited to indoors, then...
You mean, greenhouses are indoor?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Because you can, you can, you can, a greenhouse, any enclosed building, including a greenhouse, you're going to contain the odor.
But in that situation, if you put up a hoop house, you can choose to put up a hoop house, but you have to, you're still held to the same standard of any other building.
That's right.
So whether it's a hoop house, a plastic paint greenhouse, or...
Gonna purify it.
Inside an old mill building, you still have to purify it.
And scrubbers aren't cheap. I have built several in my time. They were expensive to construct and they're expensive to operate, but they work.
That's charcoal, isn't it? They run that through?
No, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of stuff. There's charcoal, there's these things that look like hollowed-out plastic golf balls that you run a chemical through, depending what your odor is, what you can, how you filter it.
You know, if Mr. Eldrich has something to offer as far as a Colorado bylaw, that'd be helpful to us.
But I think if we limit this to the inside, it's gonna alleviate a lot of problems.
I, I agree with you, Johnny.
And then we later on...
I agree with you exactly there.
Well, later on, as information comes forward, we can maybe introduce the outside growing.
Well, outside is like the solution to pollution is pollution. Outside, the whole air is gonna be dissipating the smell.
Every one of your neighbors up there could grow 15 plants in their backyard...
Right.
By law.
Twelve plants.
Twelve plants, by law, in their backyard. So you could have, in your backyard, many, many marijuana plants growing.
No.
And you could smell...
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah, twelve.
Right.
So how many people up there in Shattuck Road, that development? Multiply that times 12.
What do you think? Everybody's gonna be growing...
These guys are talking about thousands in one location. They're talking about thousands of plants.
I know, I know, but you're, you're gonna smell 12 plants, and you're, somebody's growing in your backyard, they're gonna smell it, absolutely, no doubt in their mind.
Hattler was a good town, it turned into a bunch of dope areas. Forget it.
I agree with that.
The state saw dollars, tax, tax, tax.
What can we say that we allow the outdoor grow?
Multiple places, because we changed it. Let's see. There was the definition added.
Cannabis, the very first one, cannabis cultivation.
Yeah, that's on page five, outdoor marijuana cultivation.
Marijuana cultivator, so that's...
That's the outdoor one specifically.
Pretty much everywhere except in the residential area.
And then we talk about other crops, so I, I guess you guys still have that in there that was grown on the farm. What else?
So if you just took outdoor cultivation, wouldn't that eliminate it?
Well, that's one place.
There's 30.4.1.1, bottom of page five, there's a clause about outdoor.
Right. So that, we add at it, as you asked me to do.
So we take out, so we would take this, exclude that, go to outside? 30.4.1.1. Just take out the last sentence on that one?
Then again, you know, we're jumping to exclude it, Jim. If somebody wants to grow it, way down by the Connecticut River, no one's gonna see it, smell it.
Joe, however, you're absolutely right, Joe. However, that's the exception. How do we address everybody?
I know, I...
So rather than say, "Well, you can do it here, but you can't do it here."
Yep.
Let's just, for the time being, like John said, exclude all outdoor. Maybe a few years down the road, we find out, hey, it's not such a problematic.
And watch all the communities, if they do it, they don't have any problems.
Yeah.
All right, so you, I'm just trying to think about this, 30.4.1.1, because your concern was allowing the growing of other crops. So if somebody has a greenhouse, they, you still might want to allow them to grow other crops on the property, right?
Right.
Oh, why not?
Yes.
Right. So you might not wanna take that whole sentence out.
Well, but if they have a greenhouse, you're thinking about someone using half the greenhouse for marijuana, half the greenhouse for arrowed tomatoes, or something like that.
As possible.
Wouldn't that stink up the tomatoes?
Right. Um, growing something outside.
What the heck would that mix? How would that mix?
Well, I don't, I think we, I don't think we want to allow multiple uses within a greenhouse. It's either marijuana, or it's not.
Okay.
To keep it clean.
If they're gonna do it, the profit margins are nowhere near the same.
I agree, yeah.
Tomatoes and marijuana?
Yeah, the profits are...
And this, this is gonna impact other crops that are grown outside of the crop?
Uses associated with...
That's my concern, actually.
Conway has the...
Other businesses.
Outdoor cultivation.
Who does, Joe?
Conway. But they have the renewal of special permitting.
Okay, so we said, "This excludes agricultural uses associated with other crops."
Agricultural uses, right, such as growing other crops. I think you're good then.
Yeah, so we just take out...
That outdoor clause.
Outdoor, this associate, uses associated with... This excludes agricultural uses associated... Such as growing other crops. Take out with outdoor marijuana cultivation facility.
You could take out "associated" too, if you want. You could remove "associated" too.
Yes.
Agricultural, this excludes agricultural uses such as growing other crops.
Right. So they could have the same, grow crops on the same property.
Yes.
We got an email from selectman Christian Stanley.
I will address his concerns. Let's get through the 30.4.2.8. We just say "not visible," we can delete the rest of the paragraph.
Cannabis plants, product, and perish shall not be visible, and delete from outside the building. And then delete the rest.
I'm also trying to predict the entire rest of the paragraph.
I think so.
Was there anything else you'd forward? I mean, it's the ventilation, you could take indoor out of there, it's just all gonna be indoor.
Right. That's 30.4.2.4.
Yes.
And this is not gonna exclude people from growing it. I mean, it's not gonna punish people for growing it outside, because the gentleman who was from the Stockbridge Agricultural School, who passes himself as, as an authority, said, "It's very susceptible to diseases outside."
Thirty, 30.4, on page seven, 30.4.3.4, outdoor marijuana cultivation facility shall be setback.
I'd take that all out.
Take that whole section out?
Yeah, renew.
What do you put there?
That's where we put that in.
Oh, this?
Nope, 30.4, this one right here. Take out that whole section. 30.4.3.4.
Is that section on setbacks?
Thirty point, on page seven.
Yeah, I don't have it, so...
Oh, okay. That, that's the one that says outdoor facilities and setback. If you don't have an outdoor facility...
In the bylaw, are there any setbacks required for any type of facility?
A building, there's a, the general setback on 50-foot front yard... A building, there's a, the general setback on fifty-foot front yard, fifteen-foot rear, fifteen-foot, fifty, forty-foot rear, fifteen-foot side.
Churches, schools?
There is a thing, there is a section here on schools. How far from a school that's, uh, three hundred feet?
Okay, now, are home daycares considered schools?
No. Specifically, it mentions schools. Like, pre, pre, pre K through twelve is well-defined in his bylaw. Anything else like a daycare, a nursery school, a childcare facility, or any kind of a church, childcare is not included in this. However, when you go for the special permit, we have the authority to say, no, you can't do that, okay? And this is a true special permit. Reporting requirements, so that's okay.
Do you have to have a specific reason to say no?
Yes. You're gonna have, you can't just be whimsical about it, you're gonna have a good reason to say, no, you can't do that.
You would say you can't be arbitrary and capricious.
On thirty point four, point three, four, point four, the one you just talked about, outdoor growing. Should we leave, should we simply take out outdoor marijuana cultivation facility and say marijuana facility shall be setback at least one hundred feet from any public way, and front and rear setbacks shall be fifty feet?
What do you mean?
It's gonna be. Hmm?
You can do that, yeah.
For what? For a greenhouse?
Yes.
Well, I thought we were, we had the, the butters, three hundred feet.
No.
Well, that's.
Three hundred feet from.
Oh, wait a minute, okay. Three point, four, point three, point two, no marijuana establishment should be located in a parcel, which is within three hundred feet to the property line. Oh, that's all it had to do with schools and, uh, what do you call it?
Other facilities.
Other facilities. So I think on thirty point four, point three, point four, we really wanna take out outdoor cultivation, just leave marijuana facilities shall be setback at least one hundred feet from any public way, and fifty feet from any front and rear side yard setbacks. But, um.
So that's kinda flying in the face of the neighbors that are gonna be right close to it. Putting it up close if the farmer has enough room to move it back to the three hundred feet.
We don't have a three hundred foot setback in here to the property line.
It's not three hundred feet from a, from a dwelling. It's three hundred feet from a school or another facility.
I hear that.
So, but this seems a little inconsistent to say that the, the facilities should be setback at least a hundred feet from the public way, but the front yard setback be fifty feet.
That's right.
Fifty feet minimum.
That's right.
We just say, we just say, let me see, do we define marijuana cultivation?
That you've been side made, rear and side, you think?
Marijuana, we don't.
Why is this?
Marijuana facility is any kind of, I'm assuming it's gonna be any kind of a marijuana thing.
Why is this different in our zoning laws?
Exactly, that's what, yeah. Marijuana.
Right, that I think.
If I have setbacks to forty feet to fifty feet, why is this?
So, we, we don't actually define marijuana facilities. We have outdoor marijuana culti- cultivation facilities, but we don't have a cultivation facility, do we?
We have marijuana cultivator.
Cannabis cultivation.
What I'm saying, take out outdoor and cultivation, just call it any marijuana facility.
What, what number is that? Thirty point four, point three, point four?
Point three, point four, yeah, on page seven.
Page seven.
And then you're gonna take that one off, on page five, the outdoor marijuana.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate.
That's, that's.
But the concern is, we don't define marijuana facility anywhere. So if you take out outdoor marijuana facility.
Right, you're right.
You, you're, uh, maybe just, uh, is that marijuana establishment? Cultivator, okay. So it has to go, marijuana.
Establishment.
Establishments shall be setback at least a hundred feet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
This marijuana establishment.
Is gonna be setback how far?
Hundred feet.
Why is that a hundred feet?
Now, wait a minute, let's think about that one too.
Why is that a hundred feet when our bylaws require setbacks and lots of that?
Do we really care if somebody's selling marijuana, like the Sunoco station, is setback a hundred feet? Because there's no odor. There's no odor coming from him. Okay, so we just, uh, marijuana growing establishment?
Well, if it's in a building, it shouldn't matter that.
Right, because they're not, they're supposed to handle.
Any building, so.
That's true. So I think just, maybe just take out the whole section.
Take out the whole section. They're just gonna comply with the general bylaw. Because if they're doing what they're supposed to, it's not visible at night with a light, not visible to the sky, and there's no odors. In theory, it shouldn't matter if you're standing next to it, because, except that you got a big building there, it's not infringing on anything you have.
And with the special permit, you'll be able to look at the security plan in advance?
We will be able to look at the security plans in general. We aren't requiring, we do not want to require detailed security. And we'll explain why in a second. I can explain it now. Originally, we were looking for, we wanted detailed security plans. As soon as anybody files detailed security plans, and what does detailed mean, it's open to interpretation, with us, it becomes public record. Anybody can look at that detailed security plan and says, oh, I know how to break into this thing. So all we wanna know is, you're gonna have lighting or not? You're gonna have security cameras or not? You're gonna have a fence or not? The details of what it's going to be, like you're gonna have a security camera, that's fine. What kind, how it's gonna work, we could care less.
Who it ties into.
Who it ties into?
Yeah.
That's between you and the confidentiality of the police department, if they even wanna know. Because, you know, we wouldn't know a good secure, well, most of us, including myself, wouldn't know a good security system from a bad one.
But doesn't it have to comply with state guidelines?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
And, and we'll let the state decide whether it complies.
That's right.
And it's part of their review.
Remember, they don't, they applied to us for the zoning bylaw, then they still have to get the permit from the state, which is a whole extremely involved, um, uh, process.
We don't want to know anything more from these people than we know from Walmart, which is basically where your lights are, where your doors are, but beyond that, you're on your own to protect your own best interest.
Second Schultz.
So, and of course, the interest in transfer, the rest, I don't know if that's what anybody can do with their own. Okay. Um, just as a thing, we got a, a couple of questions from Selectman Stanley about the bylaw.
Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yeah. And, addressed to the planning board, and the planning board is not obligated, let's see. Here are a couple of notes I have on sections of the proposed bylaw that stand out to me. Sorry that I can't attend tonight's meeting. Section thirty point five, the planning board is not obligated to approve an application for a man or marijuana establishment that it doesn't find is in the best interests of the town and comply with the standards and intent of this bylaw ordinance, just because the maximum number of special permits for a marijuana establishment haven't been approved. And his question is, if the project meets all the bylaws and we have licenses available, can the rejection be appealed to the select board such that the dispute be mediated and potentially reversed or upheld by another governing body? A special permit, which this is, is only appealable to the court. The selectman or anybody else in town has any authority to overturn a special permit. It's appealed to the court and it follows the legal path. Being a special permit, if it complies with the bylaw, okay, and what we want to be addressed is the concerns of the neighbor. This thing is going to be, even though it complies with the bylaw, that's, that's the part of this, uh, if you would, a little bit of a leeway that the planning board has. We can't be arbitrary and capricious. Those are the words of the state on issuing a special permit. But we can be consistent as far as making sure that, well, it isn't good for the neighborhood for some reason, and then we can say no. And those reasons, although are a little bit in the gray area, as long as we're consistent in applying that, then, you know, it goes to the courts and most of the time, like I said, as long as it's arbitrary and capricious, usually a planning board or zoning board will prevail.
So, usually, specifically in thirty point five, the language requires specific findings by the planning board in support of denial.
Thirty point six.
Thirty point five.
That's the pre-able application reform.
And the findings are listed in thirty point six.
Oh, okay, right. No, findings are in thirty point six, but the, the concern the selectman had was thirty point five. So, thirty point five, uh, does say the approval is up to the discretion of the planning board based on selecting establishments that it finds are in the best interest. So we have to go through a, a specific rubric, if you will, to, um, to make that determination. So it's not discretionary in the sense that, nah, I don't like your project. We have to have a reason for it, and that basically is just another way of explaining what Jim was saying, but we can't be arbitrary and capricious.
The other question that Selectman Stanley has is section thirty point five, point eight. And it says, in addition to what is normally required in a site plan, detail showing all exterior proposed security measures for the marijuana establishment, including lighting and fencing, ensuring the safety of employees and patrons, and to protect the premises from theft or other criminal activity. He asks, can we add that the security review be held in executive session and that security plans will not be part of the public record? My concern is the security measures could potentially be bypassed just by looking at what is on the public record. And, no, we can't hold that in, in executive session because the state has extreme rules on what can be held in executive session. And simply saying, well, our security is not an executive session item. And as far as being bypassed, you know, again, that's an issue for the state to be looking at, and we really don't want any of this to be public record, I think. We want it to be confidential to this developer, whoever that might be, and whoever the other parties are, because we don't want anybody to be able to look at it for obvious reasons. So, no, it can't be executive session material.
Are growers gonna be able to process and package marijuana they grow in the facility they're growing in it? If you look at marijuana cultivator, it's an entity licensed to cultivate, process, and package marijuana.
We went over, we went over this one of our meetings, idea of process and packaging was, I believe, to take the seeds and not to process, process them into, we have that.
Cultivator is.
Marijuana, if you go down to three definitions, Mike, it's a marijuana processor packager. Process or processing. To harvest, it defines what marijuana process means. Harvest, dry, cure, trim, and separate parts of the cannabis or marijuana plant by manual or mechanical means. Except that it not, shall not include any manufacturing and defined N C M R five hundred point zero, zero, two.
But we do say that a marijuana cultivator can package it. Process and package marijuana for sale.
Right. Yeah, they gotta package. How else they gonna, how else they gonna, um.
My question is, can they, can they package it in the grow facility? You'd have to do it someplace else.
No, they can package it in the grow facility.
So they're gonna be drying it in the grow facility also?
Probably.
Does this have to be?
I think, I think, I don't think so.
They can't, they can't dry it in the grow facility.
On the bottom of page three, marijuana cultivator, is that gonna be changed at all?
Yeah, they, they can't dry it in the grow facility.
Yeah, I actually don't.
Yeah, I don't think you'd, 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 uh, dry tobacco in the hothouse, would you say?
Well, it depends. I mean, you can, but. Who's, who's to say that this building isn't divided into a grow, a grow area and a drying area?
I'm sure they have that.
Are they gonna dry it in kilns?
I don't know how you, I don't know how you do a marijuana.
Either, either air dry it or put it in a kiln, kiln and dry it.
Well, they may just have a, have a two, 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 two units in one building. I would think that's the way they're gonna do it.
Yeah, a lot of information about coming out here and nobody knows what to do with it.
That's exactly one of the things we wanna get out here, is what don't we know? And is this bylaw not ready? You know, nobody has their heart set that we wanna do this next month. It's a few things we want to, we guys, we got the by, we got the two general bylaws that are on the board, correct? So that will take care of the limiting of the number and the general bylaw on the, um, open consumption of marijuana. But as far as growing it and selling it, you know, maybe we're not ready.
I had a thought, Jim, maybe we could, uh.
Question on sound. If you've got scrubbers going all the time, and if you've got, of course, you gotta have ventilation for the plants themselves, and then if you've got some kind of a drying facility, just, just a question on that. What's, what you mean, if you're hearing that all night long?
We, we, we have, we have a sound bylaw, and we have a sound, we have sound in for a general bylaw, the part of site plan approval.
So they be aware of that, if you'd be checking on that?
Within a site plan approval, we have a sound at the, at the, uh, boundaries, okay? And basically says that it should be pretty much not audible, and sound is measurable. We went through a whole big thing with that, with the, uh.
The kettle on the drive.
The kettle across from, uh, Weinsack Nursery. And people wanted, you know, we talked about decibels. And people were saying, you know, some of the, some of the butters wanted zero decibels. And those that are familiar with sound readings, and I, from a prior job, I'm, I'm familiar with that. Zero decibels is impossible, unless you were in a soundproofed room. And so at one of the meetings, I brought in an actual sound meter. It was in this room, and I measured the sound. Everybody was quiet, and it was fifty decibels, and that, all the noise coming from these fluorescent lamps. So, once they understood what fifty meant, they were much better appreciative of the numbers that we put forward. I think we put forward something like sixty-five or seventy. I mean, normal voice is probably an order of seventy plus. And they've had absolutely no issues with sound and everything else over there, because they, they went through some good measures of making sure it was soundproof. So, yeah, we, we wanna make sure that, you're right, scrubbers do, scrubbers work by fans. And you wanna make sure that, like, heating ventilation equipment isn't, you know, humming all night long, year round. Especially at a coworkers, when it really becomes noticeable. Yes, sir?
Do you happen to know what OSHA limits as far as maximum sound over like an eight-hour period?
Oh, that, yeah, it's extreme. OSHA, OSHA eight-hour time exposure limit is something like, uh, I think it's eighty-five decibels, time weighted average. Believe me, you don't wanna listen to something at eighty-five decibels for eight hours, um, you wouldn't sleep. It's, uh, the normal voice is around, I'm gonna say seventy to seventy-five. Every ten decibel increase is a doubling of the volume or the intensity. So eighty-five is pretty irritable. And I think a hundred and twenty decibels is something that will actually bring you to your knees. It'll hurt your ears so much.
Are you gonna do anything with?
I was gonna ask, on bottom of page, the, uh, page four, marijuana, no.
Page three.
Page three, the very last bottom one. Do we need to exchange anything in that regarding the outdoor growing or anything? Or is that okay?
Yeah, but it specifically says it, and it's the license to cultivate, cultivate, and we're not allowing that.
No, you are, just not outdoor cultivation.
Grow, yeah.
So I think that's fine.
You take it out, maybe, Jim, we should have taken up a collection to send the, at least the chairman of the planning board out to Colorado.
No, chairman doesn't want it in Colorado.
Let's send them out there anyway.
Send them out there anyway.
Probably be good for us.
Okay, a couple of tickets.
On the bottom of the page, we're going to three, four, thirty point four point one point one, we're going to leave the very last sentence in that section, "This excludes agricultural uses such as growing other crops," and take out "Associated with Outdoor Marijuana Cultivation Facilities." On page six, on thirty point four point two point four, we're going to simply say, "All marijuana establishments shall be ventilated in such a manner, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." The signage will go into thirty point four point two point five is another sentence. Top of page seven, we're simply going to change that to be thirty point four point two point six.
Eight.
A point eight, I'm sorry, point eight, yep. And we're going to leave cannabis plants, products, and paraphernalia shall not be visible from outside the building, and the entire rest of that paragraph is out. Middle of the page, thirty point four point three point four is gone. In its entirety.
That's going to change, that's going to change this.
Oh, yeah, and that, and change the bottom, the next two numbers to be, go up. Yep. Page ten, we're going to simply renumber the elevens to thirteenth in the very last section. Well, I missed something, right? I, there's something else?
No, I don't.
Okay. Can I get all that done and to David for tomorrow, my expected meeting?
And are we going to add a?
Oh.
Approved review?
Yes.
Periodic review?
Yes, 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 yes. That would be.
That would be just straight out of the home occupation or the?
Yeah, just one of them.
Bed and breakfast.
That would be added to.
Thirty point four point four point three.
Is that just for the outdoor growing facility or is that?
Annual review for how many years? For how many years? How many years you going to do it for?
We'll keep it the same. Well, you know, we, verbiage is, the other alternative is just to leave it to the built, the zoning enforcement officer, but we'll probably have to get a bigger zoning enforcement department.
Thirty, so we're going to add the annual review thirty to thirty point four point four point three?
It already talks about the written annual review.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And demonstrate a continued compliance with the condition. So, after that, when you would just say.
I'll get the word, I'll get, yeah, I'll get, I'll get the wording out of one of the other two.
And how many reviews does this has to go through? As long as they stay in business?
No. I believe we had.
Once again, if it, if it.
I think we had it.
Same criteria as we used before, if it doesn't have any objection.
I believe the other bylaws had it reviewed.
After one year and then after?
Three years.
Two or years or three years, I forget.
We had in the other bylaws, like, the first year was a one-year renewal, then I think it was two years after that. Off the top of my head, I can't, I don't know exactly the term, but I would say after three reviews, if they're behaving, we should, basically, the third, the third review should be a permanent one.
I think they stub up their reports in the state anyways. They stub up their reports in the state.
Yeah, whatever we had before, it was approved by.
Well, just to let the people know, maybe you know, but they don't know.
Well, and off the top of my head, I don't know what it was on the other ones. I've got to look under the old bylaw to see.
I think it was one year and then three years, but two or three, if you have two or three.
Any other questions out there for the time being? Yes, sir?
Mr. Zabronis questioned earlier, this point you made, or raised, is there no appetite on the board in general to ask for or require a three-hundred-foot offer zone for the facility, the growing facilities, free houses, from existing residences?
If it's, my personal opinion, that if it's complied with the bylaw, I would say there is not.
So, is it one of the easiest ways to avoid having a revolving door with a zoning enforcement officer in terms of people complaining about lights, people complaining about odors, is to cause a potentially noxious facility, which these are, to be located a little farther back than you would normally, than you would be required to locate in other residences? I mean, as it is now, we're treating this marijuana grow facility as if it was another residence being built in the neighborhood.
Or any other.
Right, yeah. So, is the, no recognition on the board that this really is a, potentially a very noxious facility?
So, we run into another problem with that. If we start creating specific zoning, by default, we are excluding certain properties from being considered. So.
That's correct.
Yes, so.
And my property was considered not suitable for ammunition factory when I built it.
Correct.
It was for residents.
Correct.
And I'm saying this isn't similar to a residence, or it isn't similar to a grow house or something that air moves tomatoes. It's a stinking marijuana facility, which is still illegal under federal law. So, as its very nature, it is noxious because it's a criminal enterprise, and we're saying we're going to treat it as if it was a residence.
Except the other Massachusetts law.
No, no, yeah, but Massachusetts law does not trump federal law.
Well, Massachusetts law trumps Massachusetts zoning. So, I think that's.
But you are, but Massachusetts has not said you can't set it farther back. They have merely said that it will be up to you to make sure that your existing townspeople aren't harassed by these grows, which is why we're not considering it agricultural.
But we, but we don't know what the right setback is. Just because you set it back three hundred feet, what does that mean? It's three hundred feet back.
Do you, do you think there's a less of a chance of odors and light migrating onto neighbors' properties if it's three hundred feet back as opposed to fifty feet back?
If they comply with the bylaw, I don't think it matters. This is the case here.
All I'm saying is, Jim, can't we, can't we try to be proactive and not have people calling Tim Nyheart constantly with problems by requiring it to be set back some? How many people that have expressed the desire to do this will be excluded with this three-hundred-foot? I mean, Mr. Saziski raised an excellent point. There's plenty of places, have it at the honey pot, where you could be a thousand feet away. I'm just saying, how about the standard of butter distance, three hundred feet? I, I, I think that's more than reasonable.
But the.
I don't see, I don't see any reason why, I don't see any reason why that isn't a reasonable thing.
The honey pot, you probably wouldn't want it because that's in a flood over. Why would somebody spit on that pot?
You could put it in, it would be pretty.
Right, but that's, that was, sorry, that was a bad statement.
Have you, have you heard of any communities doing the setback three hundred feet from?
From other residences?
Yes.
Yes.
What are they, what's theirs?
I, they haven't implemented it yet, but that.
No, but is there an average, mean, median, or mode?
Three hundred was recommended in the model bylaw, actually.
Okay, maybe we should include it.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, if it, it's, it's going to be a big farmer. If it's, a big farmer will have sufficient land to put it back three hundred feet.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Is this, this building that's going to be created, if they're going to grow in-house?
Greenhouse, probably.
Whatever, so is that going to be treated as a conventional building in town in that if I have a hundred thousand square foot grow facility, I need two hundred thousand square feet of parking?
Are you getting cute?
No, 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 I'm trying to help him out in that.
I thought you were getting cute.
No, no, that would, that would limit.
I was just checking.
In and of itself where something could be built, although it would not necessarily help with the three hundred.
If you were a farmer, you would have the ability to.
But this is not farmer, though.
This is not agricultural, they're not exempt.
Oh, I know.
Off the top of my head, I would say yes.
Although, we get into that little sort of dead end about, so how do we define that?
As long as you don't throw the Dover amendment out, I don't know.
Luckily, if it were agricultural, the Dover amendment would apply, believe it or not, and it's not.
Yeah, it would flag with you, not with me.
No.
But the only reason I raise the question is, that will certainly limit the size of a parcel that can be built on for a grow facility.
That's absolutely true. God, you're smart. Smarter than you look sometimes.
Why, why would you have two-for-one parking for someone that's growing marijuana?
I think you should pass a special exemption in the bylaw at the town meeting.
Well, we're writing a new bylaw here, so maybe that could be strict.
Build, build trips.
Do that.
I would, I would just have to see this, these same requirements that are in the model bylaw for three hundred feet.
That would be a, basically be a, that would be a, that'd be an eight-acre site minimum.
But you're writing a new bylaw here. Why does that new bylaw have to allow two-for-one parking for growing marijuana?
What that would do is that would take care of that gentleman's concerns without putting a lot of the words into the bylaw.
But, but words in the bylaw are not hard. Three hundred feet on this chart instead of fifty. That's, that's easy to do because it's within your power to do it. And it would well serve, I think, any community that's going to have one of these facilities. So, I think to not include it does a disservice to any existing residents. What would the negative be if it were a three-hundred-foot setback?
Well, if we require the two-for-one parking, unless, unless it's exempted, if you don't exempt it from the two-for-one parking, three hundred feet would be irrelevant.
No, that's not true, because you can still park.
Up front.
You can still have the building fifty feet from the front line. You can't park in there, in that fifty.
But we could make them put the building to the back if they had seven and a half acres, if they have an eight-acre site.
Do you have the authority to do that?
Yes, under the special permit, you do.
Okay, and I'm not being smart, I'm just.
No, I understand, that's, no, I, I, I'm not, I'm not thinking you are.
But you know, once again, you don't have to pave it.
That's right.
Right, no, I get that. And to Johnny's point, I think that you have no choice but to require the two-for-one because there are other businesses in this town that certainly don't require two-for-one parking in order to operate their business.
Ideal move.
But the bylaw requires it, and I understand that you don't require it to be built, but you still have to have.
Space.
The area provided for.
What did we tell Brett Banus? He had to pay the town to throw that door in three hundred thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars?
So. So, the three hundred feet, are we going to put it to a vote, or are we going to think about it, or? Nobody's made a motion because I don't really have a lot. So, a couple of factors here. Do we, if we do the three-hundred-foot?
We need to put them.
I, that's, I'm trying to think, we have to, if we have to change the density table as well.
I would say no.
I think we could, it does say that, it already says, additional dimensional density regulations may be, may apply as required in other applicable overlay districts, special permit in our general regulation section of the bylaw.
We don't have senior housing in there, and there's, there's no setback, a little bit different.
Okay, so, all right, we can do it within the text of this then.
Okay. So, if we're going to do it, I would say we should do it under thirty point four point three point four, the one we took out, and simply say marijuana establishment shall be set back at least three hundred feet.
Cultivation establishment, because we don't want to make a three-hundred-feet for the selling.
Oh, you're right, yeah, yes, that's correct. We don't want to make a selling facility back three hundred feet. But that's only going to be in the business and industrial zones anyways. So, let's just be sure we marijuana.
This is only for growing?
For growing.
We already struck out thirty point four.
Should be set back three hundred feet.
Marijuana.
Marijuana. So, we have a marijuana establishment which includes a marijuana cultivator, that also includes retail.
So, we want to say Craft Marijuana Cooperative, Marijuana Cultivator, and Marijuana Microbusiness shall be set back three hundred feet. So, those are the three that are allowed in an ag residential.
Is there any repercussion to doing that for a business to comply with that?
No, because marijuana retailers are separate.
No, I'm talking about.
Well, yeah, sure, there is a repercussion. You're going to tell some people that, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't play in this game because you're a lot, not big enough. You don't, you don't have three-hundred-foot setback, and to be fair, it has to be three-hundred-foot setback from the property lines too, probably. So, not everybody has, so, has to have three-hundred-foot setbacks on the sides.
You're going to be talking a thousand by thousands.
Yeah, not everybody has a thousand by a thousand piece of property. So, somebody is going to, you know, somebody's going to tell you, no, you cannot repurpose the welding shop because.
I got some farmland for sale.
So, yeah, that's the repercussion.
You're qualified. Yep.
Can this be?
But you can't get there from here.
Can this be conducted in the flood plain or anywhere?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
New commercial structures are allowed in the flood plain, it's just new residences aren't allowed.
So, you could grow, you could grow marijuana in the flood plain?
Aqua for recharge area?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
But not on APR land. So, I suppose we could, actually, if we're going to put in the larger setbacks, I would say maybe we need to craft something about parking too, because I don't know if we're calling for large setbacks for, for uses that will have limited parking demand, we might as well just address it. Not quite sure how at the moment, but.
Well, if you have that big of a parcel.
Yeah, you have enough space.
Two-for-one parking is irrelevant.
Right, because you, your parking will be in your three-hundred-foot setbacks.
Right.
You more than likely meet your requirement.
Yeah, you're going to have.
And you're not going to need all that parking, so you can farm the rest of it anyways. Although, again, the language of the parking bylaw does talk about availability. Any building here and after constructed or modified, altered, expanded for limited business, business or industrial should be located so as to provide two-to-one. So.
This will fall into a gray area.
If, we can address it, we can add in language about, well, we're allowing it also in agricultural residential, so.
We could simply put into the same thing that you've adopted with section five point four point one.
So, let's take a vote on the three-hundred-foot setback.
Make a motion. I'll make the motion.
For second.
To add Craft Marijuana Cooperative, Marijuana Cultivator, and Marijuana Microbusiness shall be set back at least three hundred feet from any public way, no, from any adjoining properties.
Any boundary line.
No.
Any boundary line.
Any bound, okay, any boundary line.
Public way and/or boundary lines.
Well, the public way is a boundary line as well. So, you can just make it boundary line covered.
And so, that was for craft, craft marijuana.
Good step in there, Jim.
Craft marijuana, marijuana cultivator. Craft marijuana, marijuana cultivator, and marijuana microbusiness.
Micro what?
Microbusiness. That's the motion. Marijuana microbusiness facilities. This is, this is marijuana microbusiness. That's the, with the definition in the bylaws, marijuana microbusiness, craft marijuana cooperative, and marijuana cultivator.
What section are you putting that in?
I'm going to put it under the 30.4, .3, .4, the one we told you eliminated. Second motion.
Already seconded.
Already, yeah, seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing, no, uh, no, none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to oppose it. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a bad one. But, that's fine. The motion passes four to one. Do we want to say anything about parking then?
Yeah, I, I don't want to just leave it as a gray area, so, um-
We could simply add another section, 30.4, .3, .7, parking shall comply with section 5.4.1. You've got 300-foot setback, like-
Right, no, I understand the parking space is there, but I think in this case for, it's just, it, that's silly. Uh, that's just way too much parking. Uh, I think we can tailor it to the specific, since we're, within this particular bylaw, we can make an exception for, it's going to have the setback anyway, so-
If we end this bylaw, right?
You're heading in the right direction.
You would prefer the farmer to grow other agricultural crops on the setback, I think.
They could, or they could.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Sure they can. It stands right in the bylaw, they can do that. Yeah, it doesn't have to be dedicated to grass.
No.
Yeah, but at some point, at some point, you know, the, the parking bylaw obviously needs tweaking going forward. But at some point, it's just ridiculous to say that you need, um, you know, 20,000 square feet of parking, even if you could provide it with reserved parking. It's ridiculous to say you need 20,000 square feet of parking for 10,000 square foot grow facility that has two employees, or six employees. I think it'd be, unfortunately, let's see, do we have? The only place where we talk about parking spaces is the square feet.
Maybe we could just say one-for-one.
This is compatible because it's not going to be able to be converted into another-
They don't even need the one-for-one.
And not going to be able to convert it into another type of facility. For example, on Route 9, we had a meat market that became an auto store, that became a Echelon Cafe, that they had enough parking for auto store, they had enough parking for the meat market, but not for Echelon after they added on the extra store.
Well, then they could change the facility.
You know, what is going to happen to a facility later when you say, oh, I don't need all that parking, but all of a sudden they sell the property and then we're stuck? But, so, we're, we don't have that dilemma here. That's where I'm going with this.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to require one, one-to-one parking for craft marijuana, marijuana cultivator, and marijuana microbusiness.
Second.
They don't have to, they don't have to build this as a-
No, they just have to provide, provide space for it.
Right, but just try and tie it to-
What did you say?
One-to-one parking.
What, what is your, what was your word for it?
To require one-to-one parking for craft marijuana, marijuana cultivator, and marijuana microbusiness.
You probably should put something about square footage in your bill, rather than just one-to-one.
Yeah.
One, square foot.
So I'm depending on Jim to, you know, put this into English.
I'll, I'll, I'll look at 5.1.
Yeah.
5.4.1 for the wording, just do it.
So provide, maybe provide off-street parking area equal to, equal to the floor area.
Cultivator and-
Parking. Equal to-
Just to be the leeway to reword it to make it more sense.
Four.
Yeah, okay. We have that motion.
And that will be?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5.0. Who's the one with tonight? What? First of all, thank you people for coming here, because you, this is new to us. This is not something that we would have an expert on, we can go someplace and say, you know, what have you done? Because anybody in the state is new to it, and to say this is going to be perfect is obviously a dream. It's going to require some tweaking down the road. We want to make sure that the first one, if nothing else, it's too restrictive, and we can ease up, because it's very difficult to make something more restrictive down the road, as opposed to, oh, we made a mistake, it needs to, you know, make it a little bit easier. That's usually not too bad to do. We start trying to make something later restrictive, it's a very uphill battle, and people really start screaming, you took away my rights. And in some cases, they're probably right on that comment. So, um, I think we've made some good changes here tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Joe, I think your idea of sending him to Colorado is a real good idea to make.
Okay. We'll see you in a month.
In a month.
Okay, thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
I will give you a copy, and I'll change this as soon as I change it, which will be tonight.
Okay, and then in a month, I don't know if we're going to get back to some of the other things we're working on.
Yes, yeah.
Definitions.
And MS-
MS, MS4 will probably be the next thing we should look at.
We had talked about waiting till-
What is the state doing with that?
Because of the state.
The state is holding off on that?
Right.
Ah, okay.
So our town administrator is, might have something to say.
We're going to, our next, our next topic to work on with PVPC would be MS4, but the state has put off MS4 implementation.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Thank you, Jim. USCPA implemented it as of July 1st, 2018, so we've already filed the notice of intent with the state, we've already done our G I S mapping, so working on the bylaws should be the next step.
Okay.
Well, we have them, them ready, but they, there are some changes that still may be made. I'll have to ask the others in my office who, you know, are more knowledgeable on that.
Okay.
That's what they had recommended.
Okay. So look, look at the changes that were made or need to be made, and between added definitions will be the next two topics.
Yep.
Preferably MS4 would be first. Okay?
I take the definition up. Are you ready to go, Jim?
Okay.
If I, if I, in fact, we're all going to stay in this for a while, too, so if you know, I'll be thrilled out of my mind.
No, I think it's just some changes that are still going to be made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've got three people that want a copy of the bylaws when I make the changes. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exotic Auto.
We're here. I'd like everybody to-
Oh, okay.
Have a good night, Tom.
I will not be participating, so I will.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
I'll catch you from home.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You good? Bill, you want to take notes?
No.
No, he's not taking notes.
You are.
I'll let Mike take the notes. Better handwriting.
What's the matter with you? You get paid big bucks.
I took them last time.
So what? You get paid big bucks.
My cursive is pretty bad.
You get paid nothing. You're going to earn your-
My cursive is pretty bad.
He's going to earn his by default.
I don't know, Johnny, you're the, you're the junior member of the board.
Johnny's got, got the junior member of the board.
That's how I got started.
You don't want to hear from this junior member.
That's how I got started.
You guys get paid the big bucks, earn your keep.
When you have 45 years on the board, then you can start talking.
Hey, you collect 10 grand for health insurance. I collect nothing for people.
No, it's not 10 grand. You, you're like Scott Merzback, you have a tendency to fake news.
Well, I'm going to, next meeting, I'm going to get that two facts for you.
Okay, I'll make a public announcement.
Settle down. Hold on to what?
Settle down.
Are you my keeper?
Sometimes I have.
Okay, good job.
Hey, it's a tough job, so I'm going to do it.
That's true.
Okay.
Very true. Okay. So what you see before you is a revised site plan based on the input from the board from the last meeting. So basically what it boils down to is I had 10 cars for sale and five cars for repair on the north side of the building. Now there are five cars for sale, five cars for repair, a net loss of five cars there. The remaining parking has stayed the same. Uh, you wanted-
Green space.
Yeah, you wanted to see where the dumpster would go. So the dumpster's on the south end of the building. That way the business can use it, and if need be, the residents can use it as well. Um, green space on the intersection of Cummins Road and River Drive.
I think that would help a lot, facilitating where the cars can and cannot drive.
Right, now, that being the time of the year it is, and it's going to be a while till the appeal period is up and whatnot, that's probably not going to happen-
I understand.
This year.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then the area that you want labeled as no parking, striped or whatever, so I show it as something like that. Now, the issue came up with the potential for a street sign, and one can fit in this corner, being 20 feet away from River Drive, 20 feet away from Cummins Road.
Okay.
Uh, I put a note on here, proposed freestanding sign, no more than 40 square feet. We don't have a design yet. Design would have to come back before the board to get approval before it could be installed. Same thing, there's two signs on the building, 20 square feet maximum each for a total of no more than 40 square feet. Uh, again, we don't have the design, we'll have to come back before the board to show you what that sign would look like. And then lights on the building, they have to be downward casting. Uh, Paul has not picked out a design yet. We have to come back before the board to show the board what that's going to be.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that is everything.
The arborvities, uh, will remain on the north side of the property?
I don't see why not. You don't have any plans to take the arborvities out.
They're on the east side, aren't they?
They are on the east side, yes. And, yeah, they're on, they're here, so that's, yeah, the back, the back line.
Trees removed.
Yeah.
Do you really need that much signage? I mean, this is not Route 9, I mean, you've got to see the garage, you know, just a block.
Well, you, you get it from coming from the north on this side of the building.
What's, what's allowed by the-
The bylaw allows for it, so-
Just a question. I know it allows, but just saying, it's not like you're looking, you're not going to find it if you're looking for it. All right, that's a, just a comment.
Who's actually going to run this?
My son.
Hours of operation.
I'm sorry, what was the time?
8:30, 5:30.
I think when we were here last time, it set up till 11:00 P.M. No, just wanted to make sure that you would let me do that.
8:30 to what?
5:30. And I, I, he's out of his current business at 5:30. I know, I drive by it most days when I go home, and he's, he's gone already, so.
Hours of operation going to be, what were they going to be?
8:30, 5:30. 8:30, 5:30.
8:30, P.M., 5:30, P.M. Did you get, find any information on repairs?
You know my husband's dad. I found some information on, I can probably forget personal stuff, but I found some parts in the box, so I know to make that one, I was hoping that would make sense, to know that you bought-
Black Chevrolet, okay, bought something June 2013.
Yeah, I did not do a repair last year. I sold a couple of pieces.
So he had been doing repairs there?
Yes.
Because he certainly wasn't putting all his stuff into his own car.
No, he was still working on repairing that building. That garage is not in optimal shape, as most people know, but-
It was a whole lot better than when the former owner had it, I'll tell you. I grew up up the street from there, I remember. It was never in good shape when the former owner ran it.
I know, and my sweetheart would have had it really finished by now, I do know, but it just, you can't do it when you're dead, not in a car person's.
Well, he certainly would like Exotic Auto and their manager to sign an agreement with this board that vehicles, whatever the vehicle number is for sale, the vehicles for repair, customer vehicles, employee vehicles. And why I say that, his current location, nobody figured, well, he would be to the max. And if he needed any changes, he would have to come into this board, or he would forfeit his site plan review and his class two license. You agree to that?
Absolutely.
Good, now.
Just to be clear, you've got five cars for sale, five for repair. My personal opinion is you go to space for 10 cars.
Yeah.
Whether you have seven new and three for repair, or seven for repair and three for new, is irrelevant to me as a planning board member, as long as your total cars-
Right.
-don't exceed 10.
10.
10, okay. Any combination of those two for 10, I'm good with.
But now, if inside, we have those inside.
It, it, that's, this is the exterior.
Okay, serious.
Inside, does he, he can put the cars, whatever?
Yeah, whatever, you, I mean, you're only going to fit, you're only going to fit-
Say about five?
I was going to say about four or five cars inside.
Right.
Okay.
But outside, we're going to maintain.
To Johnny's concern, you're going to approve, if you approve this, you're going to do so based on the site plan.
Correct.
So the site plan dictates where cars can be, how many they are. So that's just, I mean, I, and I hear what you mean, you-
I want him, I want him to hang that up in his shop so they refer to that, that they don't stray off of that. Okay?
Yeah, well, as I said-
I, I've had calls of his facility on Route 9, packed to, there's not an inch to spare there. I don't want to see this lot in North Hadley end up the same way.
Understood.
Understand?
Absolutely.
Agree?
Agree.
I think we'll be fair with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
You'll be right for the town.
I will.
So, would I ask a question about the, the lighting? Um, is it going to be on a timer and go off at a certain point? You're open until 5:30. I understand there is a security interest, but are we going to keep the whole thing illuminated all night?
Well, some, the lights doesn't have the effect, they will stay on because we have cars for sale.
Agree.
I think we'll be fair with you?
Yeah.
You'll be right for the town.
I will.
Right.
So, would I ask a question about the, the lighting? Uh, is it going to be on a timer and go off at a certain point? You're open until five thirty. I understand there is a security interest, but are we gonna keep the whole thing illuminated all night?
Well, some, the lights doesn't have the front, they will stay on because we have cars for sale, just for security purposes. But the inside lights will be off. And we'll try to keep as low lights as we can, because of course there are neighbors.
Does that sound like you?
Well, yeah, everything will be down light. No lights will enter his house, and if there is, it's just tell me that it will be down, out there in our way.
That's the way I've done it.
Anything that worries you.
Ten total of any of those two.
If this property, just.
However, they can get next. Your customer, when you go to the front, had two employees inside.
So, his son's running that, so he signs it, his son signs it.
Okay.
So, Jim, I have one other question.
Sure.
When you advertise this, you advertise, did you check, just check the legal notice?
Yeah, he said they were relocating.
No, but what do we advertise here before?
Uh, we have a very two, so division of the second app for special permit site plan approval to relocate an existing twenty-four hundred and twenty-two square feet building at three seventy, at three seventy-three River Drive, limited business zone, and the applicant shall be, the plans and applicant will be viewed in Town and Clerks office.
Okay, so I was just thinking of this. I, I, I probably should've caught it sooner too, and we all probably should've caught it sooner, but limited business, that's a special permit too. Do we need to do a special permit for, a limited business special permit?
That's a good question. I mentioned, said limited business. What is the bylaw that this?
Yes, it, it, maybe it can be construed as, as just a change of use rather than something new, but, um, so we're actually doing this for your, your good, because you don't wanna create an unforeseen error here. If it's something that has to be re-advertized, uh, and revoked, that's cheaper than going to court over.
Yeah. Well, if it's a grandfathered use, then it's not a new use, because a new auto repair station is not permitted. So I would look at this as a site plan approval of a grandfathered use.
Sounds reasonable.
Because the repair shop is not permitted.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think that's all right.
So, going back to the repair issue though, I mean, it's not permitted, but it was permitted previously, and how do you know it was permitted?
She, she showed us, she showed us repair slips of, 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 of her husband doing repairs.
And also the sale encouraged.
So, actually, I think, maybe the question you're asking, how do we know it was originally permitted?
Yeah, just because.
That used to be a business district right up to that point.
Okay.
In fact, originally, Route forty-seven, the entire length of forty-seven up to the Sundale and Towne line was business, same zoning as Route Nine.
So it was, it was, it was a, once upon a time, that was a bona fide business and a bona fide business zone. The, the zone from Cummins Road to the Sundale and Towne line was eliminated many years ago, and likewise, many years ago, the business zone from the Sundale, from the Cummins Road to the intersection of Rocky Hill Road, or no, um, to, uh, what is that? Uh, Regis' building, was changed from business to limited business.
That was done in nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, so that was, once upon a time, of, excuse me, it was a business zone. So he was legal at one, I mean, he was legal at one time, it was a grandfathered business there, now. Okay. Uh, and it continued to use it, although not wide open and stuff like that, but it was a, you know, up until recently, when her husband passed away, so within the last two years, it had been used. As she showed us repair slips, it, like I says, he certainly was buying this stuff for his own car. Okay, um, all right.
So, uh, just to clarify, so the continued use of the property, is there a requirement for it to still be grandfathered?
Say it again now.
The, the fact that it's been continuously used is required for it to still be grandfathered?
Yes, yes. If it's, if it's gone into non-use for a period of more than two years, you lose your grandfathering. If you continue to use it, you are a pre, what they call it, pre-istic, pre-existing grandfathered use.
And, and so, um, forgive me for not understanding, but what, what makes it have been in use for the last couple of years?
The fact that her husband, two years, less than two years ago, had been selling cars and doing repairs out of it. She showed us some slip that he had sold some vehicles, and he had done some repairs.
Class two licenses have to, required to keep a logbook.
Yeah, it, it, again, it doesn't have to be, you know, massive amounts.
Right.
Some kind of a business being run there, which, which is what had been running there for years, um, saves its grandfathering. Not the scale, but simply the use, the actual something being done.
There's no requirements under the class two licenses for amount of cars. You can sell one car a year, and that's perfectly fine.
Or none.
Right, or none.
He may have had a permit to, to store, let's say, six vehicles on his property, or ten vehicles, but if he only sold one, that was his prerogative to only sell one, a year.
But back then, there was no limit on none of that.
But is it, so is that the story? So they've sold at least one car in?
Yes.
In the last two years or?
Yes, correct.
More than.
More than one. He actually sold, I wanna say about, I wanna say three or four, something like that, in, a year, he had been, he had sold.
From that, that site?
Yeah, well, what it was, he was a antique car fanatic, if you would. He wasn't repairing your typical local Chevy, local Ford, local Toyota. He was dealing with old cars, restoring them inside the garage, and selling them kind of by word of mouth or other advertising, so he wasn't putting them out front, because he wasn't, you know, not everybody wants an old antique vehicle. That's, that's kind of a unique market, but that's what he was working on. And that was fine.
And you don't park them machines outside anyways.
Yeah, so, that's why you didn't see a lot of activity, but it was all ninety, I would say ninety-five percent of it was inside. And, you know, it was kind of, it was, it was a very quiet business there for. Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, the other thing is just the details on sort of, um, you know, so, so the little cars is down the side, right? That's.
Correct.
And for the lights, like, how much, uh, how much light are we expecting?
What?
Well, I mean, he seems reasonable, right?
Right, he's, he's gonna, he's gonna come back to us with the lighting details. First of all, the light exposure cannot exceed one foot candle at the property, so he's not very far from the property line, so it's gonna have to be very subdued lighting, it's going to be down light, it's not gonna be something that, as you drive by, like, you can see in some kind, some lights, as you drive by, they're not really putting out a foot candle at the property, but the glare of the bulb, um, you can see. So what we really look for is what we call shoebox lighting, and it's typically a fixture that just shines light straight down. So you'll see the light on a building, but it's not gonna be like a bulb looking at a light bulb. He's gonna come back to us with the details, and Randy knows very well what kind of lighting we're looking for.
So it does mean the, the building across the street will be sort of lit up all the time? Is that, I mean, so it'll be, they'll be, you know, it's not facing us, but the building itself will be bright from the downward facing lights?
It will be, it'll appear, it should appear subdued to you. Enough that if somebody's walking around at the cars, you'll see them. But not so much that the lighting, the light of building is going to look like daylight or anything like that, or, or glaring at you across the street. That's what it should be.
And the building inspector has a measuring mechanism for the one foot candle if you have a concern.
But, you know, we, we've had very good luck with the shoebox lighting, okay? And that's, that's the whole trick to it. The downward lighting, um, is really the key, 'cause there's, like, I mean, you probably, well, you weren't here for the dark sky effect earlier, but we, about.
Yeah.
About, I wanna say ten years ago, some lady, at the time, enrolled all of the planning board into the, the, a group called Dark Sky. And we were, she renewed us for like two or three years in a row, and we're getting all this information in the mail, at least I was, I think everybody else was getting it too. And it was actually very informative, and it showed all kinds of stuff about the dark sky, and it actually showed pictures of the world taken from far above the earth, especially you could see where Vegas was, where L.A. was, and you're talking, what, you know, hundreds and hundreds of miles above the earth from the satellites, and it was like, wow.
Where North Korea was.
So you guys were moving.
Yeah, and, you know, that's where we got a lot of this, you know, and one of the things that they advertise exactly, they use the word, shoebox lighting, it's downward. Those lights don't have the upward effect to the sky, and so you're, you're really subdued, forcing the light down and not much outwards.
Yeah, yeah, so certainly for light pollution, I understand downward light is what you want, but.
Holiday inn.
It's more toward being the neighbors.
Where, where do you live in reference to the?
Uh, three seventy, across the street.
Across the street.
Right across, is that Phil's?
As across as anyone.
It's, it's up a little bit, isn't it? It's not, right near the diagonal.
It's a new house just north of.
Phil's old house. Okay. And actually, the house here was moved, was attached to Phil's old house. Remember seeing that move?
Last house was?
Yep. Anything else?
So the other thing is, the, the no parking area is paved, but there won't be cars?
It'll, it'll, it'll be, actually be painted in some way to delineate where the no parking is, so it won't be an imaginary section. It'll be, it'll be delineated, whether it's a lot of striping or just some, some, some lines there, but, excuse me, the, the drawings right here say there will be something properly, adequately delineating the no parking. Okay?
And, and if it, if it spreads to cover that, what, what happens at that point? Right, not that we expect it to, but just if it, if it does, you know, for seeing that.
Yeah, I mean, to realistically say there'll never be a car there, is probably.
No, no, no.
But I mean, you have the vast majority of time. You go, you go to zoning enforcement officer, or come back to see us, and we, we'll, we'll adequately notify the zoning enforcement officer, but he would be the first course of action, would be the zoning, zoning enforcement officer who's the building inspector. Okay?
Paul lives two, three houses down the road, down Cummins Road. If you got a problem, go see him.
River Drive, River Drive.
I'll, I'll stop by the lights.
Who's that?
Shouldn't make sense.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Problem solved.
It's all.
Please don't wait for.
It's all submitted.
No, whatever.
Really, this is Harry Russell's old house?
And that's my word.
Okay. Are we good? Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the application for site plan approval, special permit, and to approve your application in a limited business special permit, based on, uh, no. Um, site plan approval.
Just cross that off.
Site plan approval for a special permit, based on the app, based on the following findings and conditions. The project satisfied the general purpose of site plan approval, the project is in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw, and a limited business zone. Project is not detrimental to the future or established character of the neighborhood. The intended uses are not prohibited by the term of the bylaw and are grandfathered. The board determines the work conducted is in accordance with the following plan. It will be in compliance with a site, with a section of the site plan approval, special permit. Eaten drawings as of, where's your, like, the, okay, revised September twenty-five, two thousand eighteen. The planning board has reviewed and granted the following conditions: not exceed a total of ten cars for sale and repairs, um, employee and customer parking, oh wait a minute, we ought to be more specific with that. Two employee and four customers.
Don't forget, I don't know if you care about that, but that's the house.
That's the housing part. You wanna keep the housing part? Housing to the house.
There, just wanna make sure that there's no confusion.
Um, green space to be added up front, all repairs inside. Copies of the site plan approval, of the site plan approval application have been distributed as provided in the bylaw, satisfies site plan review criteria. Planning board places the following conditions. Approval is for the following use only and for the use of any other, and use of the site for any other purposes is prohibited without further approval of the planning board, exotic auto. No signed detail has been provided. Applicant to return with signed detail. Um, outdoor lighting fixtures shall comply with the bylaw. Applicant will return with light fixture details. No storage trailers, shipping containers, temporary or permanent are allowed onsite. Hours of operation shall be eight thirty A M to five thirty P M. This approval is subject to other boards if and as required, including Hadley Conservation, Hadley Water Commission, Board of Selectment, state agencies, any project changes direct, or any other boards. Any project change directed by other boards or agencies must be approved by the planning board. Um, one setup, well, there's no site, there's no, uh, construction to speak of, is there? So you don't have it onsite, um.
What's the hours, eight thirty?
Eight thirty A M to five thirty P M. Site plan shall not be affixed until notice of a decision is affixed to the site plan? Do we still do that, Bill?
Uh, yeah, just sign off on it.
Okay.
Be sure everything is.
Okay.
I think the rest of it, you can delete.
Yeah, enough is really the rest of the site. That's the motion.
And, I'll make it contingent upon.
Contingent, when we get back to this discussion.
That the owner and the manager sign it.
What do you wanna call this? The, the?
The agreement.
The letter agreement.
Letter, letter agreement. Between the owner and your son will be the manager?
Yeah.
Right, and the son the manager.
Paul, is this, what's, what's the corporate structure? Is it a proprietorship, limited liability corporation? L O C?
Owner and son.
So it's your son, partner in the L O C?
Sign.
You have a different L O C.
He has to be signing this as a, as the L O C, not as an individual.
On display in office?
Yeah, I have the L O C.
Shop, in shop?
Yeah.
But I am the, I'm the one, so I'll sign it.
Okay, letter agreement between owner, between, yeah, or letter agreement.
Exactly, not a L O C.
Letter agreement with owner and son to be signed and on display in shop.
Right.
This is the letter agreement. Okay, that's the motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes with Mr. Dwyer abstaining, by four to zero to one, four zero one.
So can I, uh, one clarification? Is the, is forty feet signed it on the building plus forty feet sign, or it's forty feet?
Forty foot. Forty foot road sign and forty foot on the building can be divided between, up to four signs. They, they show up to two twenty foot, two twenty square foot signs. It'll be one facing, well, one facing you and one facing Cummins Road.
Give him the, Randy the agreement, so he can get the signatures for that.
Okay, legally, they keep it on shop.
Okay.
Very good.
I'll, I'll get them to sign this, I'll get a copy back to you.
Give it to her.
And then, yeah, a digital copy, keep it in the shop, okay? How many do you want?
I'll, and then probably, uh, email Bill with, uh.
P D F?
The P D F, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Paul, play nice out there, okay?
All right, aye.
Okay. Okay.
Some general information, oh, we had, um, the legal advertisements for the Gazette, for the legal notice of our zoning hearing, a, a motion, entertaining a motion to pay three hundred fifty dollars and eighty-six cents of the Daily Hampshire Gazette, so moved. All in favor? Aye, 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 aye. All in favor unanimously?
I will see him move.
Three fifty, eighty-six. What? It ticked one? Let's see, do I need to drop that? Oh, go, you have to sign it. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. And then we got official rescinding of the zoning article on the parking. I'm sure we got, everybody has, you would, uh, this one's, uh, emailed to us. And that is all I have. Anything else? I don't know, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, send Jimmy Max to Colorado on.
I, I, I do have one other thing I wanna.
For a month.
For a month.
Make sure you do good job.
I, I do have one thing I wanna bring up. I went by it, the, the, remember Mr., the, uh, Tim sent us an email, had a question, did we approve this Tesla sign on a pride site?
Correct.
And we said we did not.
Correct.
And I see the sign has been erected.
Yes.
And not only that, it's internally illuminated.
Yes.
I went by it the other night, and I see that it was lit up.
Sorry.
What kind of sign?
The Tesla signs for the charging station on the back of the building that we asked about, remember you asked if we approved that sign, I said, no, we didn't.
Is that a directional sign?
No, it's an advertising sign.
It is?
And it's pretty big, I mean, it's not, if it's a directional sign, it's the biggest one I've ever seen.
What's the hangup for that not opening?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Now, do we want to bring it to the zoning enforcement officers' attention? Or just wanna wait until they come back and give them a tough time a moment?
Just, we used to give, bring things to his attention, and I would say, just, because he did ask.
Why, you wanna make him look like the bad guy?
Pride is going to be in in two weeks, according to a call I had today. Okay.
So what are they coming back for?
Final sign off, they are getting, uh.
Then what's the sense of, sending a letter for?
We're in the back of two weeks, we just won't sign it.
Right.
I won't sign it.
Exactly.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what we need to sign off on, they're, they're going to the conservation commission either tonight or tomorrow.
Okay.
And I guess the question is whether that is going to have any changes, but, you know, let's, yeah, let's just send, uh, send Tim, yeah, it's his, we, he asked us if it had been allowed, we said no, and it's been installed, so I think, uh, he owns this one.
He owns this one? Well, they, they, they haven't occupied the building, they haven't got an occupancy permit, and I think we should handle it right here at the planning board. If they had an occupancy permit and stuff, they.
Someone issued a sign permit.
That would be Tim.
So, so that's why it should be referred back, right back to him.
Oh, good move, right.
Unless they put up the sign without a permit, in which case.
I'm gonna put it past them.
That might, that might be so.
I'll, I'll, okay, okay.
All right, all right, I think we've agreed to refer it to them, so if you wanna drop them an email, I will, if I remember it in the morning.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting history, thank you, and thank you, John.